Workshop. And we will start with the gifted services update. And Dr. Rogers and Dr. Kelly will be sharing that presentation.
There we are. Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Spence, and the School Board. Today, I will be providing you with information regarding the ODS, Old Donation School Process, Selection Process. The update has been added to the agenda and will provide clarity relative to the recent questions regarding students who are not selected to attend Old Donation School for the 2023-24 school year. Before I get into the details of the questions regarding the selection process for the students to be admitted into the ODS program, I would like to offer a few general comments. First and foremost, we recognize the outcome of the ODS selection process has led to several questions and concerns regarding the process from our family members. We acknowledge and emphasize, excuse me, empathize with the families of the students who were identified for ODS consideration, yet they were not selected to fill one of the available seats. Please know that we are committed to making any necessary adjustments to our processes to avoid these questions and concerns from happening in the future. Over the past three weeks, my team has spent collectively hundreds of hours reviewing the processes used this year, reviewing language within the approved local plan for the education of the gifted learners, responding to emails, phone calls from a group of concerned parents, and talking with staff in our legal office and in the gifted office at the Virginia Department of Education. In short, we've now completed an exhaustive review of our plan, the selection process, and deeply considered how we might address the issue moving forward. And now I'd like to share where we are, how we got here, and the plan moving forward. So first, I want to share information about our gifted offerings to paint background and context in terms of what we offer gifted learners in VBCPS. Some of the board may recall this slide as it was shared with the board during the August 11th, 2020 meeting when the local plan was presented to you for information. The graphic highlights the continuum of services with resource cluster programs as the placement along the options for which parents and students can select to apply. The common thread between the continuum of gifted services is the expectation that we have a strong resource program at each of our schools and a strong resource cluster program in our elementary school. Our goal in the plan is always to increase the services that are provided, excuse me, increase, always to increase the strength of services provided to our students. Now, to guide the services that we offer our gifted learners, the language in our local plan clarifies that all students who are determined to be eligible for gifted services in general intellectual aptitude, or GIA, qualify for services in their neighborhood school resource program. Our plan specifies that the GRTR gifted resource teacher, in collaboration with the teacher, must differentiate the regular education program to meet the needs of each gifted student and assure that there is a match between a student's capabilities and the gifted services that are delivered. Additionally, it also states that students' families may apply to ODS to receive gifted services for GIA. I also like to share for background, ODS is a centralized, full-time, gifted school servicing, students in grades two through eight. Admissions is application-based and requires that students meet the criteria for gifted identification. The ODS curriculum expands and extends the Virginia Beach City Public Schools curriculum specifically to meet the needs of the gifted learner. The specialized curriculum is designed using methods and resources for developing the abilities of our gifted learners. Families of gifted learners have the option of having their application reviewed for consideration to attend ODS by not opting out of the application process, and this is different from what we've done in past years where families had to opt in. To reiterate what was shared on the previous slide and in our local plan, all gifted learners are expected to have their needs met in resource cluster models at their home schools. That said, we want to ensure that our families are aware of the great importance that we place on the resource cluster model and the importance of meeting our students' needs regardless of the location, whether in a neighborhood school or at ODS. This was shared with some of our families who attended a meeting that we invited them to last week. So prior to inviting our families to that meeting last week, we received a large number of inquiries and questions from our families. Absent the personal questions, we diligently categorized all the questions into three key areas. And those three key areas, we will be addressing during this presentation. Those areas are rating scale, the random selection process, and the appeals process. So I want to talk about the rating scale. Parents have raised questions about the rating scale that you've been utilizing in our system. We recognize the significance of reliable and comprehensive rating, and we will explain the factors that were considered, the methodology that was employed, and how we continuously strive to improve its accuracy and relevance. The random selection process is one of the concerns that was also raised by our families, and it revolves around the random selection process. We understand the importance of transparency and fairness in this regard, and we will provide detailed insight into how the selection process works, clarity around the subtle differences between random selection and the apparent misunderstanding around our use of a lottery system to determine placement of students at ODS. And lastly, the appeals process, another area where many parents share questions relative to understanding the appeals process. We acknowledge the need for an effective and accessible mechanism for our parents to ask questions or seek further clarification relative to the appeals process. So in our presentation, we will share information relative to that as well. Now, I do want to share some background information with the board that will help understand some of the adjustments made to our processes. We've always had a strong partnership with the School Board and always intend to operate in the spirit of collaboration as well as transparency. And as many of you know, we've worked with experts in the field from the College of William &amp; Mary and Johns Hopkins University on ways in which we can expand and strengthen our opportunities for our gifted learners. We've been sharing information with our board relative to the considerations for those expansions to students, for students since 2019, as you can see on the slide in front of you. The intent was and continues to be partnering with our stakeholders in discussion and planning. Now, relative to partnering with parents, one of the research-based recommendations that we received from our outside experts was to better partner with parents in the gifted identification and ODS selection process. One of the ways in which that was done was sharing information with our parents directly to ensure that parents or more parents were aware of the gifted identification process and ODS selection. That's a goal that's identified in our plan and focuses on better communication and support for our families. So prior to this year, all of our first grade students were screened for gifted identification using the Nagliari or the INAT assessment. Any student scoring in the 90th percentile on the INAT was eligible to have an application started for gifted testing. But the onus was on the parent, on the parent for them to request from school staff that their child be tested for gifted. Our outside experts found that our processes and information on the website was challenging at best for our parents to navigate. Additionally, if a student was found to be gifted, the onus again was on the parent to request being considered for Old Donation School. Again, it was found that many of our families were not knowledgeable about the program and identification for giftedness. In an effort to support our families, a gifted application or gifted applications are now automatically started if a student scores in the 90th percentile or better on any of the national norms assessments that we give instead of having the parent initiate that application. Parents were provided with the opportunity to opt out of being considered for both gifted services and/or gifted programming at ODS, and we did have several families that chose to do that. Here's a timeline of the efforts or example of the efforts that we've made to partner with our families. This slide shows specific communication that was shared to support parent awareness of the processes to include the rating scale. I'll share specific examples on this in the next couple of slides. So what you see in front of you now is the current Old Donation Selection Process document that was posted on our website after the board received a memo in August. You can see that the information includes a four-point rating scale as well as the signing of one score to students. We also shared information via an alert now. The blurb in front of you includes, on the bottom line, and it shows the exact message that was shared. And in order to ensure that you're able to read it, we blew it up and made a little snippet there. Here, parents have a link to the gifted application where the previous slide was provided and also where the rating scale information regarding one score is posted. It's important to note that no questions about the processes were shared with us prior to the process being completed. So now I'd like to walk you through what that testing process is for first grade. Step one, universal screening is conducted for all of our first grade students, and any student scoring in the 90th percentile or better on the Nagliari assessment or any subtest near three for the COGAT would have a gifted application initiated for them by the Office of Gifted Testing. And again, taking the onus off the parents and especially those who don't understand gifted services in general. Parental input in the process is provided here in that they have the opportunity to opt out of moving forward with identification or for consideration for participating in gifted programming at ODS. Committees then review applications and make a determination for gifted identification. Qualified applicants being considered for ODS have to have scored at least a 90th in the 90th percentile or better on the INAT or the COGAT to be considered. A ranking of one to four is assigned to student applicants. The process is similar for students in fifth grade with the exception that there are other opportunities for which those students can request to participate in, i.e. the middle years program at Plaza Middle School. And we've received several questions relative to the criteria that are used for ODS selection. And this slide in front of you includes the information that's shared on the website regarding the criteria that are reviewed by the selection committee. I do want to share that the national percentile ranking on the INAT and the COGAT are used for ODS selection. All students considered to have scored at least in the 90th percentile, again, on one or more components of the COGAT and on the INAT or on the INAT, would be considered. The selection committee considers all of the items listed on the slide in front of you when making determining rankings. Some of our parents have requested that we use test scores to rank all the students according to their standardized test scores to fill the open slots at ODS. So for example, if a student scores in the 99th percentile, the request is that those students be ranked first, 98th percentile, those would be ranked second, and so on and so forth. That's not what we do. So for the last 15 years, at least the last 15 years, we've ranked students applying to ODS by using our rating scale to determine the top students, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that momentarily. We rank students using a four-point scale, and students and families who do not want to be considered, basically who do not want to opt out of consideration, have their portfolio thoroughly reviewed and ranked. And while the point scale has changed from five to four, we've rated students based on a portfolio and use this ranking and selection to ODS. And the next slide will help to describe what the rating scale is and what it was. The chart in front of you shows the rating scale that we use to rank students. On the left-hand side of the chart, in the blue area, is the five-point rating scale that we used to have, and you'll notice the following categories, and I do want to read them to you. Five, if a student gets a five, he or she is consistently strong in all application components and is considered a definite yes. Four, strong in most of the application components, a likely yes. Three, shows strength in some application components but not consistently strong, possible but not likely yes. Two, few consistent areas of strength, a likely no, and then one, not recommended. On the right-hand side of the chart, in the green area, is the adjusted rating scale. The scale was adjusted from one to five to one to four. The one, not recommended, was removed from the rating scale. And the rationale for removing the number one from the rating scale was to assist in mitigating the use of personal interpretation that can sometimes come into play when using a larger scale, and especially when you consider a value of not recommended to already identified gifted learners. So it was challenging to understand why a student already identified as a gifted learner would not be recommended to receive gifted programming. You'll notice language in the rating scale on the right-hand side is commensurate to the language on the left-hand side, with the exception of not recommending already gifted learners. Additionally, it's also important to note that the verbiage of a definite yes needed to be removed, as this is not and has not been the situation in all grades and all years that we've been doing this. For example, students in grades three, four, five, seven, and eight have had a higher number of students, top students, than open seats that are available. In some instances, we didn't have any seats that were available in those grades. As such, the score of five has not meant a definite yes for those students, so that language was removed. And I want to explain and provide some clarity to the ODS rating and selection and reiterate the criteria that we use. We do rank students using a review of the criteria listed above, and we do not rank according to test scores, as a rank that VBS has committed to for several years now, implementing is a thorough review of multiple criteria and identifying top students through consensus on a four-point rating scale. So I want to talk a little about how that plays out relative to the rating scale. So in this slide is what we did with using a five-point rating scale. So for the 2021-22 year and prior to, three individual scorers evaluated student applications and gave scores that ranged from one, not recommended to ODS, to five, consistently strong, and all the application components a definite yes. That definite yes indicated in the slide prior to this one. A score of five was the highest rating, and students receiving a score of five from all three committee members were considered to be top students. Students that received two fives and one four were considered to be the next level of top students. And it's important to know that annually, we receive questions from our families regarding gifted identification and admission to ODS, and especially as related to one committee member ranking being subjective or biased in some way. So we've always worked closely with our families to address those questions and have been reviewing our processes to address them annually. Doing so led to the adjustment that was made for the 2022-23 school year, and that was the removal of the number one, not recommended, from the rating scale. And although the number of values was reduced, we did still receive questions from our families regarding rating between evaluators. For example, in the situation that you see in front of you, a student received two fours and one three. So then the question becomes, why did one raider rate a student a three, my student a three, when the other two saw the application as a four? So in an effort to better align evaluations, the three evaluators were asked to discuss the student application collaboratively, considering all criteria for the 2023-24 school year. They were also asked to assign one score that ranged from one, few areas of consistent strength, to four, consistently strong, and all application components. And now I want to share how that rating or ranking plays out in actual selection for student seats at ODS. So the slide you see in front of you uses data that are not actual data from the 2021-22 school year. This is shown for demonstration purposes. So if Mrs. Riggs, Mrs. Weems, and Mrs. Melnick were three raters hypothetically, and you were evaluating 100 students, 100 students got rated 555. We had another set of students, 50 students, that were rated 554. So you have two levels of students that are there. The numbers are not actual, I want to remind you. So we begin filling the seats with the 100 students that were rated 555. We have 130 seats that are available. So those students that were rated 555 were invited to take the first 100 of the 130 seats, which leaves 30 seats remaining. We have 50 students who would be eligible to fill those 30 seats. So what we have been implementing for at least the last 15 years is a random selection from the pool of students that would go into the next level seats, and that would be from those 50 students. The random selection is just that, it's random, and those, and 30 students from the 50 that are in the pool would be randomly selected to take those seats. Moving forward for the 2022-23 school year, using the four-point rating scale that was there, a similar process where you would have, we had, these are actual numbers, we had 97 students receive rankings of 444, considered to be our top students, and we had 93 students that were ranked 443 from three individual raters to be our second level of top students. 97 students were invited to take the first 97 seats of the 130 available seats in that grade, and then 93 students were placed in the selection pool, and the remaining 33 seats were filled through random selection, the random selection process that we've been implementing for at least the last 15 years to fill those remaining 33 seats. So in essence, we had 97 students rated 444, 93 students 443, and we randomly selected those students. This year, we had 244 students that were, received rankings of four. We have 130 seats to fill with our top students. The process that was used relative to random selection process was implemented earlier in the process than we have had to do in previous years because we've had a larger number of students to fill the 130 seats. So that's how that went. I do want to provide a little bit of clarity relative to the subtle differences between lottery and random selection process, as some of our families may not necessarily be aware of what the differences are. As a result, I'd like to provide you with just this brief explanation. Lottery selection process, in this process, if we were to use a process such as this, the process would be giving equal opportunity for consideration for all of the 130 available seats at ODS in second grade. The selection would be done through a lottery, which means that each student's chance of being selected is based purely on chance. No specific criteria or qualifications are taken into account during a lottery process. It's designed to be fair, ensuring that every student has an equal opportunity to be chosen. A lottery process was not used to fill 130 available seats at the ODS program using the 996 ODS applicants for that school year. A random selection process, conversely, a group of 244 students were identified and ranked as the top students, earning a four from an initial pool of 996. From that group of 244, only 130 students are randomly selected to fill the available 130 spots for the program. The selection process was conducted using a double-blind method, which means that no identifiable information is considered during that selection. That ensures that the process remains fair. The additional information on that slide represents the random selection process that we implemented this year, and it's the same process that we followed for at least the last 15 years. So for example, the number of top candidates in grades three, four, five, seven, and eight, again, generally exceed the number of available spots, resulting in the use of a random selection process in order to fill those seats. In grade two, 244 students received a four, exceeding the number of spots in that grade. In grade six, we had 224 students who received a four, exceeding 152 available spots. In relation to inquiries regarding the appeals process, all families were given a chance to appeal irrespective of their child's score of four. We do acknowledge that appealing a score of four may appear to be futile in this particular scenario, and we do intend to address the appeals process as part of the suggested plan amended. All right, we'll skip right to the ODS application data. On this slide, you'll see our efforts in partnering with parents, and that yielded an increase in the total number of applications this year, applications this year as compared to last year. So there were 296 more second-grade ODS applications and 57 more applications made in grade six. And I'll remind the board that we have grade six students applying for other programs in the school division. Of the 996 ODS applications, 244 received a rating of four for consideration. That means that 752 grade-two students who applied for ODS did not receive the highest scores, which is 52 more students than applied to ODS last year. Of the 528 students who applied for grade six, 224 received a four. There are also questions relative to waiting of application, and as mentioned earlier, the only criteria that I discussed earlier in the presentation were considered. During ODS selection, our committees participate in a blind review of applications, and this means that no identical information is provided to the individuals' rating, the application. So our raters don't know the race, they don't know gender, economically disadvantaged status, having a sibling at ODS, or if a parent who's a VBS staff member, and therefore no factors such as that were considered in selection. So in essence, we screened more first-grade students, and as a result of our partnering with our parents, more first-grade students applied for gifted education, and almost 300 more students applied for ODS this year. I do want to share the difference in identified top students who were offered the opportunity to attend ODS is 54 students as compared to last year. Out of the 1,709 students who applied this year, 1,407 were identified, and 51 families opted out of ODS consideration. So I'd like to just discuss our next steps. Our immediate next step is to hire director of K-12 and gifted programs, as the position has been vacant since March, and Dr. Kelly has been filling in in that role. We also plan to partner with the Gifted Community Advisory Committee and conduct two summer meetings to discuss recommended amendments. We also plan to create an amendment of the local plan for the gifted education to reflect our current practices that the community and board were made of in August of 2022. We'll plan a communication plan and share that plan relative to the ODS selection process for the 2024-25 school year and the timeline with all of our stakeholders. We also plan to create a task force to initiate processes for the new local plan for the education of the gifted and work closely with our GSAC. And then we also plan to recommend a comprehensive formal evaluation of our gifted programming at VBCPS. So at this time, Dr. Kelly is here to join me in answering any questions that you might have.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I have a few questions, not necessarily related to the information that you provided. You mentioned the fifth graders, there's 130, the first graders, there's 130 seats. How many classrooms or how many teachers is that for first grade, do you know?
They staff at 24.
Twenty-five in each class.
Twenty-five in each class. Twenty-five in each class.
Okay, and then with admissions for arts or dance, how does that play into admissions? Is that only in higher grade levels, or where does that come in?
For second grade. Or middle. Middle, right.
Dance is only middle school, and the art program is, again, only, is there a, for the arts? Ah, they moved it, okay. And so for the sixth graders that we saw where they have an admission process, the art, the dance, is that another component that they are rated on, or is that just built into that one through four?
No, that's separate. That's not included in this.
Okay, so those are separate seats. Gotcha. Okay, that's the, the only question I have. I'm sure I have some comments, but that's all I have. Ms., Ms. Manning.
Um, so my first question is, prior to that last meeting for the parents, they were asked to submit questions in advance and at the meeting. Have all of those questions been answered to the parents?
Yes, through the presentation, yes, ma'am.
Through this presentation?
Yes.
All the questions?
Yep, with the excep- with the exception of personal questions relative to their individual child.
Okay, because I think in the meeting you said there were like over a hundred and thirty questions or something like that, so.
And we, we chunked them into three areas, main areas, and then those that weren't chunked, we answered them directly in these, in the presentation, directly.
So if parents still have questions that they feel that may not have been answered, who do they present those to?
They can, you know, certainly send us through email, and then we will work with Ms. Melody to, how they have to answer.
Sorry, there's some advice I've given them concerning some of these issues that I believe are legal issues and.
Okay, um, my next question is for, uh, the slide on the lottery versus random selection. I'm having a hard time understanding that because by definition lottery means random selection. While I understand that you're saying, I think it's after that.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that you're saying that you didn't do a lottery or random selection for like the entire, not, nine hundred and ninety-six. It's still, I mean, a random selection is a lottery, right? I mean, I don't understand the difference because when I was asking questions early on from administration, I was getting responses using the term lottery. For those students who were not selected through the lottery process, they will receive highly qualified gifted services.
Mrs. Manning, eventually there's vernacular and language that we need to make sure that we have a clear understanding about what is and what is not a lottery as compared to random selection process, and quite frankly, like it's shared, we spent a few hundred hours kind of looking at that, pouring back to the gifted plan from ten years ago. The language has been consistent, and we do, that's part of the process implanted for the next, um, plan to make sure that we tighten the language up. I'm just being honest, uh, because there are subtle differences that were, uh, evident in the plan from fifteen, fifteen years ago that are really not in play right now. There, there are things that we do, and that have been done and are not necessarily reflected in the plan. So one of those things is lottery, what's the difference between lottery and random selection and how that, uh, is defined and what that looks like? And we'll work very closely with the, um, our gifted advisory, uh, committee, as well as with our legal department to make sure that that language is clear and that we communicate what that language actually means.
Okay, because it's not clear to me, because I think that a lottery is a random selection, so. Okay, so I'm trying to understand, um, the plan that we approved in August of two thousand twenty, I've thoroughly looked at that again. And so, um, and you've given us kind of in the presentation kind of a little bit about this. So it's my understanding that the local plan included the one-to-five scale, but we used a one-to-four, correct? The local plan says that top students will be chosen, but we used a lottery or random selection. That was different, that, that part was different from the plan, correct?
And that, we've used that process, the random selection process to fill the seats.
Not all of the seats.
I'm sorry?
Not all of the seats.
This year.
Yeah. We used the lottery this year, correct?
We use a random selection process.
Random selection, okay, right, which, but in the local plan, it says the top students will be chosen. It doesn't reference that all the students in that final pool would have been chosen that way.
Well, all the students in the, the two hundred and forty-four students were identified as a top student.
Nah, something, just as a clarification. So the plan, um, doesn't break down grade levels, and we do old donation selection for grades two through eight. So every year we have had, as Dr. Rogers explained, in grades three, four, five, seven, and eight, a larger number of top students than available seats, and the random selection has occurred throughout at least the last fifteen years in that. So as Dr. Rogers mentioned earlier, the random selection has been used in grades two and grade six, just not as early as it was used last time. The students were ranked, and top students were identified, just as the slide indicated that the four, four fours were top students and four, four threes were top students. So our fours were our top students, which resulted in the same situation that we typically have for three, four, five, seven, and eight every year. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay, so, and then to go down on, on, um, so in our local plan that we approved, it says parental input would be considered, but parental input was not considered. Is that correct?
We do consider parental input.
Parents do have the opportunity to share information with us, they have the opportunity to opt out, um, they have an appeals process. So it just, it's not in what you are referring to as far as the, uh, parent form that was once.
Right, and that's what was in the plan, correct, that we approved?
It says parent information. It, it doesn't go into detail about what that form was, so.
Okay, because I remember when I, when I did it, I, my parental input was like I had to write an essay.
Correct.
And I'm not saying I agree or don't agree with any of this. I have my own opinions on it. I'm just trying to understand what was approved and what was actually done.
Also, I, I will share, our GRTs do take anecdotal information from students in grades K through one, and sometimes.
Yeah, I know the GRTs do, but I'm specifically referring to parental input.
Well, they, they also get input from parents that way, too. They'll ask parents questions.
But they contact all the parents that applied and ask them questions? No?
No, the parents can call us, and it specifically says parent information in the form, in the plan, so.
Okay, um, and then parental, um, so in the approved plan, it says that, um, it should have parental consent to get past that step three that you mentioned on there. Parental consent in the local plan was required for the application to move forward, but that was changed to an opt-out process, which isn't necessarily consent, correct? I mean, that, the change, what was approved, is it?
I'm, I'm not sure that's true, and I, I think you're. Maybe we should ask Kami to weigh in as a, as a matter of legal issue, because I, if you are asking, if you are notifying every parent, and you are saying if you'd like your child not to be in this process, you need to opt out, but you can stay in otherwise, you're obtaining consent.
So we verified that they received the information?
Every parent received that information that was eligible for, for, um, consideration, yes.
Well, I think it's the same process that we use for media release.
Okay, alright, that's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, Nick.
But I want to hop back to about fifteen years ago. And so many years ago, sorry.
So many years ago, oh wait, a- as a first-grade teacher, I knew all my students always got, um, they were always tested every year. But in order to move forward to an ODS program, the parent had to opt in. So what was happening was there really were pockets of students who actually qualified, whose parents may not have known or understood, or maybe were not able to create a parent's input portfolio where they're able to write something about their child, even maybe not understanding the gifted mind and what that means. And so, so from, in the beginning, we had pockets of children who were identified but went without an opportunity, really, no fault of the child's, okay. So we're going to fast forward to today where, isn't it wonderful that we have so many students who actually qualify for gifted? So now, as the process stands, if you meet that benchmark, right, am I just making sure I understand this? If you meet that benchmark of ninety percent, your child automatically gets put in a bowl that says, hey, your child's here and is getting ready to make the next step, correct? If, is if, but if you do not want your child to move on, I don't want my child to go to ODS, it's too stressful.
Or to give this service.
Right. Those come out, but the rest of them actually move on to the next step. And it is there that then the, the process, the, um, I wrote it down, the, um, yeah, the ranking, the ranking happens, okay. And again, this year, so many students received fours, okay, four, four, four. So what I do like, though, is that, I think for me, the most important part was that five-step rating. I'm glad that one at the very bottom that said not recommended was removed because none of those children who made the cut should ever be referred to as not recommended because they've already been recommended. So to remove that, like, I, that piece is great for me. I, I like the four. So what do we do, right? So that's what I have to, that's what I have to ask myself. Now, what do we do when this many children qualify? As a parent, I wouldn't go out and say to anybody, you know, my child scored this on a test, I don't know why. Somebody who may have scored lower, or somebody who, you know, we don't know what other children presented to the rating, to the rating groups. So we had a lot, and we have one hundred and thirty seats. So my question, my next question is, not that I'm, I'm asking for this to happen. My question is, first of all, how many gifted schools exist, like standalone gifted schools exist in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia? I know there's one in Hampton.
They don't service, uh, kids, students in grades two through eight. The one in Hampton is elementary, um, and it stops at, I believe, fifth. No, I'm not telling the truth. They do have a middle school, but it's separated, it's not K two through eight.
Let me ask you this. Why do we have a gifted school? It, I mean, it's just, it's a fair question. Why do we have a gifted school when gifted resource teachers are in our schools and can provide services to students? I think it's a fair question to ask. I'm not saying we need to close ODS. But when I, when I look at what we're faced with, which is, is disappointing for some families when you have so many, and then it becomes, we have so many on an equal plane, and then we have to choose. And I feel, I, I feel terrible about that. But the truth is, the truth is like, we don't have enough seats. So to increase our number of classrooms in that school, when our need is so great, so like, I, I really think, then I think, you know, the other side. So our special education population has grown exponentially. We are well over eight thousand students. We have an, an underserved early childhood program that we are desperately seeking a space for. We have, we're, we're trying to build new schools because we have crumbling schools. So we have a whole community over in Bayside that could actually fit into, uh, we could do a two-way program at ODS that could accommodate, um, grades, you know, accommodate Newtown Elementary grades four, five, and six. And then Newtown Road would actually be available for our early childhood program, which is desperately needed. This is my worry. So is it going to get to the point where so many families are going to be disappointed? Or is this cyclical? Could we have a lot of students that qualify, and then it kind of, the numbers kind of go down a little, and then the numbers could go way back up again? There are always going to be people who are disappointed, and again, I'm sorry for that. But it, it just makes me wonder, like, what are we not doing in our regular elementary schools with gifted cluster programs and additional gifted resource teachers? And then how do we weigh the disappointment of parents who students qualify along with a bunch of other ones that didn't get in with parents that we are desperately trying to accommodate with, with needs, with special education needs? And then a capital improvement issue and the money that needs to be spent on schools. I mean, ODS is a gift. I understand that, but it's not an necessity. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, and that we should not be servicing gifted students, but I have, I just have to ask myself that question in honesty and fairness. Is it going to come down to a class-action lawsuit every year because somebody's child did not get in? And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. Um, Ms. Martin.
I know, I know we're thinking about short-term task force review, some potential solutions. And I'm hearing things about fifteen years ago, but I'm concerned about fifteen years from now, like Ms. Melnick is. And I'm, I'm, I don't know how far ahead our demographer, uh, projects, and I know that our CIP plan, you know, we have schools that we're going out to like twenty forty in terms of the rebuilding, right? So infrastructure money is not available, um, to add something in. And something I wanted to share because of my work in economic development and economic policy is both Virginia Beach and Norfolk have robust remote work attraction initiatives. Lots of money is going behind this. The state is going to be doing a nationwide rollout to attract residents to Virginia to increase workforce payroll tax revenue. And so this is the top destination. We have some of the best schools. And so I don't know that our demographers' formulas are really going to reflect the true recruitment that we're going to be doing. So we are going to see this issue come up over and over again where we have more students than seats. And so we have to ask ourselves the question, the cost to operate ODS, is that better spent enhancing cluster education in the long run? So more students, these two hundred and forty-four students, get more robust gifted learning, rather than the few that get selected getting the full day. You know, by law, I understand we're not legally required to offer a, a separate campus, although we are uh, to provide clustered services. So as someone with, with a child in the system, I really want us thinking short-term, of course, we need to address the concerns of these parents. But wow, we've got to figure this out long-term and make sure we're activating the potential of each and every one of our students, gifted or not. So I want us to, you know, put that in your minds. Let's work with our demographer, let's work with our capital improvement folks, and really think about what is the long-term solution here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. And just being part of the Gifted Cat Communi- uh, Committee, I just wanted to make sure that the community understands why this is a continual, um, conversation that we have because we are the, one of the few areas in the state that actually has a gifted testing office. So we are very fortunate to have just a particular office that really focuses on our gifted students. And, um, just in, in, um, it, it's late, so I'm trying to remember the exact numbers, but we are about ten percent higher than the rest of the state in terms of other school divisions and our gifted amount of gifted students because we have such focused testing and such focused services. Now, I wanted to say that, but I also wanted to ask, um, in your presentation, you said, um, that now we actually, if they score high enough on the, the Negliary and the, the COGAT. On the, the negligary and the the cogat testing, which we just added the cogat testing just to make sure, we're again. Furthering that identification process, right? So, so now we're really, really honing in on making sure that those students that might not. Test well in the negligary are actually do, you know, pulled in on the cogat testing, so again, bringing in more students. Um, but uh I just had a question because a parent in the meeting said that. That at the application took hours of work. Um, from the parent parental side, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood because I thought now we were actually. Putting the application in for anybody who scored at a certain percentage, so if if somebody could just address that one question first.
Any student who received a ninetieth percentile rank in any of the assessments, like you said, they were, their um application was automatically generated. Any parent whose student did not, and they wanted to apply, they would have to go on. The application site themselves and they could apply even if their child did not have a ninetieth percentile.
So perhaps the child or the parent that said that the application took hours of work was somebody whose child did not?
It could be, but even that, I I and I'm not trying to, I I could certainly not say how long it takes a a parent to do that, but. The fact that was brought up earlier is parents do not provide this, that they don't have to fill out the form that they did before, so it it's not an extensive um. Process for the parents who do want to go on the application.
So, so I just want, that that's what one of my questions was, just because, so now we are actually completing the application on behalf.
Correct.
Of the families, and so of of anybody that tests high enough to get in that grouping, okay? And then um, the other question that I had, um, they, another per parent had said that. Um, they had discussed this with a gifted resource teacher um about this, this concern in the process. Um, uh, how often are we updating the gifted resource teachers in terms of? The changes being made and making sure, because even in the um, you know, in our committees. Um, you know, we talk about the cluster teachers, ensure, you know, making sure that we're grouping them in, you know, bringing them into the mix. Um, having discussions with them, so.
I do know that annually, the um, the gifted resource teachers, as you know, they meet. Uh, regularly throughout the year for professional learning, um, but they, at the beginning of the year, they do have one specific meeting where they do go over. All of the uh, the identification and ODS selection process for that school year, so any of the changes are described in. What the roles and responsibilities of the GRT will be in that process.
Okay, and then I just, I I wanted to make it perfectly clear in terms of the difference between a lottery and the random selection. Because for the lottery, we actually have a lottery process in Virginia Beach, and that's through Green Run Collegiate. So regardless of their academic history, their discipline history, um, and other factors, economic factors, all all the different things. If a student applies. For the G, the Green Run Collegiate program. It is literally a lottery, anybody who applies will be put into a hat, or not a hat, but you know, put into the process and then. It, they're randomly pulled, okay?
And I did want to add something to that, um. In the plan, it does state that uh we would consider the feasibility of the lottery system from gifted identified students. And in that presentation and on the slides from Dr. Plucker, um, that were noted previously. Uh, that's the lottery system that they were talking about, it's that straight lottery from the not, from any, from the group of gifted students, which is not what we have, we haven't done that yet. We've considered feasibility feasibility of it, but we've continued to rank. And do the selection from a smaller group of students, not the lottery system.
I personally think that, that in this program, that because it is a gifted program, that, you know, the random selection process is a better. Process, but I just wanted to clarify because I think that when Dr. De Vries was here and asked that question about the lottery not being used, that's what, because. In the Virginia Beach Division, we understand what a lottery system looks like because we use it for Green Run Collegiate already. As opposed to the difference between random selection, which is what's been used because only the people. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, the, only the students that are in that top tier ranking are even part of that random selection. And only when it gets to the point where those same level of students. Are actually in a a situation where we have more students and seats is the random selection process used. So I I guess I would like to go back because, you know, um, in in the earlier workshop you had mentioned. Even in past years with the one to five ranking, um, you know, even in those years, we still had parents who were concerned. About their children not getting in. Because we always have more. Students and seats, and so I guess. I I I want input from the parents, I I do want input from the parents because I guess the question is, if you feel like. The one to five process was better. But we still had parent, or we still had students that were not getting in under the one to five. I agree that if we should not have a not recommended, if they're already recommended, so the four is just a lateral. Basically change, um, only removing the one, um, but if you feel like. The, having the three evaluations was better. And, you know, and and that worked better and was more understandable, you felt like it was a more fair process, we've. I think there was a change made because that was not considered fair, because we did still have parents who were. Not um happy because their student wasn't part of that, so I I guess the question is, what is the answer here? Because in every situation, we're gonna have, we're having kids that don't get in. Because we only have a certain number of seats and. We have a gifted office that is identifying all of these students, and so I guess. It it might be rhetorical, but the question is, you know, is it better to not identify students? Or is it better to identify students and have more students and have to figure out that solution, so I'm gonna, I just want to put that, that food for thought out there because. That would be my question to the community is, um, what do you consider the better option?
Yes, we have had that conversation, the standalone lone gifted the best route or is. In your homeschool the best route, and we had it, I don't know how, who who was here when we had that conversation, was I the only one, it was brutal. It was brutal, we had parents to come and say, this is, you know, one of the best things about Virginia Beach Public School is. Because we have such an outstanding gifted program, and part of that gifted program is not the cl- uh, not only the cluster. But the standalone building, so, but you know, it might be time to have that conversation again, I'm not saying, but. But people are very passionate about the gifted services that we provide here. If I'm a student and I, and my daughter was one of these, and I'll identify as as gifted, I stay in my homeschool and I get. The gifted resource teacher, how many hours a day do I get that? A approximately, uh, for element, for fifth grade.
So you, the cluster teacher uses gifted pedagogy daily? That's just how they're trained. Each building has a gifted resource teacher, and those teachers go in, they plan with the teacher weekly and they go in and do lessons and co-teach. And it's at least weekly, but I can't say very specifically because it depends on what the. Plans are that they make, like if they're doing a specific unit and they have some learning that might, that might. Need partnership with the GRT for a couple of days in a row, that may occur, it's. Uh, it it's all about what it says in our plan and online, which is meeting the needs of our students and ensuring that. The needs it match the curriculum and the instruction that occur in the classroom, so the teachers that are cluster teachers, they actually receive training. And they have all of the same um gifted pedagogy training that the teachers at Old Donation School receive, so Jacob Slatter, a lot of the the same um. Tools that the teachers use at Old Donation School are actually implemented in our resource cluster models. And the teachers have to modify, that's why they plan with the GRT, they plan with their groups, but then they also have to plan with the GRT because they have to make modifications. To the um enrichment and the pace of their lessons compared to the rest of the grade level, so when you ask. How frequently do the kids get their services, they get them daily because they're getting gifted services and gifted instruction from the cluster teacher, that instruction occurs all the time. And then they're getting also support from the gifted resource teacher, and that I can't tell you, I know some people have asked. Do they get pulled out for twenty minutes, it's not like, and I want to make sure I say that, it's not like they have um. Services like a IEP where they are designated twenty minutes, three times a week, it's not like that, it's that, it's. What's the the unit that we're working on, what's the support that we need, and what is this gonna look like to make sure that we're meeting the needs of these kids?
When we had, we did have a GRT who was going, prepared to share very specifics about what. She does in the, in the classroom to support uh students, and uh. We weren't sure how long we were gonna be, so we excused her, so perhaps at another meeting we can bring her back. It's a little different, a lot different, when I was a gifted student, I went out once a week for maybe thirty minutes and. We did whatever lessons that we had, I don't remember a whole lot about it other than learning acronyms, OPEC asked me what that is, I know it's not. What we, oil petroleum exporting countries, that's the only thing I remember uh from that time, it fast forward to now. Gifted learning in a clustered environment looks very different, it's ongoing.
Yeah, I I know my daughter, it hasn't been too long ago, though she loved when the gifted cluster. I mean, when the gifted GRT came into the classroom and it was about once a week, and so, but I understand what you're saying, but it's not. Seven and a half hours a day like at, like at the standalone building.
I will say that the, and the, at the standalone building. The teachers modify the curriculum, they enhance it, they change pacing, just like the teachers do, matter of fact, if you read our plan, it's the same language. For resource cluster as it is for Old Donation School, um, I did want to note that uh as listed in our a plan. The professional learning has been enhanced for GRTs, um, and one of the big focuses has been on coaching. So the GRTs not only have had professional learning over the last several years to really continue to build their capacity. But also to support them as coaches so that we are really enhancing that resource cluster teacher model.
Okay, um, two more quick questions, what percentage of our elementary students are identified as gifted, I mean, you had nine hundred out of. I'm thinking it's about sixteen or seventeen percent now, does that sound pretty accurate?
I know, division wide, but not elementary broken, I don't ha- I don't know it broken down to elementary, but just division wide, our percentage is thirty percent.
Of how mu- how much?
We did it from our numbers.
Thir- thirty percent, th- three zero.
Say that again, is what?
I'll, I'll have to, I, you're making me feel like I have to double check.
I think we've just answered our problem right there. I mean, it's, it's one thing to identify, but maybe, and that's my second question, I mean. And I remember when we had this discussion about standalone versus cluster, I remember we had some experts come in and they said, a truly, you know. People that are so gifted that they need a standalone building, I think they quoted like the top three percent. And at that time, we were identifying thirteen percent, and they were saying, wha- you know, what are y'all doing? And so now we're at that, and that leads to my second question, I'm having trouble figuring out how everybody. In that nine hundred group, I mean, I. Can be the same, I mean, I know it's one, two, three, four, I mean, I mean, the two, even the two hundred fifty. Because of. How can you be the same, there has to be the most gift, I'm sorry, there's gotta be the most gifted, just like there's one or maybe two valedictorians out of six thousand graduates. Um, the baseball draft, I'm sorry, you got tons of people in the baseball draft, they're not always equal, you've got tons of dance competitions. You've got hundreds of dancers and and ice skaters and gymnasts, they don't ever get the same score. Well, exactly, and so that's a thing that, I mean, if we are identifying thirty percent and so many of them are exactly the same. I I just don't get that, that just, that seems so unreasonable to me, that you can't be, there, there's got to be, it it.
Let me ask what you mean by that, when you say exactly the same. Used a pretty good example of a baseball draft. Right, so you got.
Been through that.
You got a pretty, yeah, no, so you got a pretty good group of players that are getting drafted, right, so. And they're certainly the best of the best, right, of the, all the kids that are coming out of college and coming out of, you know, fall ball and everything else, they're the best of the best. But in that group that gets drafted, there are some who are truly exceptional. And there are some who are destined to be yeoman. Players who are gonna be riding buses for the rest of their life in the minor leagues, but they got drafted. As amongst the best of the best, and so there is differentiation even for that group of young people who go to play ball. That's a good analogy to what we're talking about, you got a group of kids who are drafted. And they're all eligible to be drafted, and they're all good, and certainly in that group of of kids. There are going to be different levels amongst that group of children. But that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have been drafted.
Exactly, but in the draft, you're the top draft, even in the first round, you differentiate, this is the very top guy that gets ten million. To the fiftieth round, the last.
Process does, right?
Not when it's all fours, not when the two hundred fifty get all fours.
Out of every eligible student. Two hundred and forty-four got all fours.
Got identified for the draft, they got it, because we could say.
I'd say those were the ones that were drafted.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, I I I I disagree because there's. You've got, I, you can't tell me that two hundred fifty kids all get a four, because if they do, well, you can tell me they get a four. If they do, we need to really differentiate the rating scale where they're getting. A five, I don't know, what whatever we use because. Yeah, I, that's all my comments, but thirty percent gifted, there's a problem right there, I mean. Whoa, that's it, yeah, check on that, please, I find that unbelievable.
That's not just this year, I think that's been ongoing, great.
Yes, you are, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, I didn't think I'd ever get get to speak. First of all, I want to say that I feel like ranking is important. And they just made it perfectly clear. In the NFL draft, everybody talks about the number one player that gets picked, right? There's a reason for that, because they try to pick the guy who's, you know, who's who's out there, who's who's always talked about, he's, he's really good. Alright, so. But we've always had this problem, ever since we had, ever since we 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 went to a, a gifted school. We've always had the problem of we didn't have enough seats. Some years we had more seats available than others. But right now, we have a hundred and thirty seats. For the upcoming second graders. Period, at Old Donation School. And I like the fact, I like the fact that we eliminated that one when we were doing the one to five. That was unnecessary, who who knew, who cares about that one, that that one was not necessary, should never been put in there to begin with. So I'm glad that we went from the five to the four scale. It's not perfect, the four scale is not perfect either. I also don't like the way that the rating is done with the raider, with the, with the raiders. Raiders, raters. When they gave the four, 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 and some children might have got a four, four, three, depending. What I don't like. Is how it was changed this year. With the consensus. And I agree. I'm sure there were parents out there who said, why did one raider give my child a three and the other two gave him a four? Well, that's, that was the way, that's what's not perfect about it, okay? But I also don't think the consensus part is perfect either. Because I feel like that is what. That's what eliminated the comparison of students who had the four, four, four. And then when you had a question of who's gonna get those seats or not, you could compare the student who had four, four, four. And maybe there were other raiders that came in, and they gave that student a four, four, four. Then you compared them though with students who had the four, four, three, so they fell into a little bit lower category, even though they're still gifted, I get that. But they're a little bit lower. I just feel like the the consensus created more students having just a four, because they talked about it. And. Whether they convinced the other one to, okay, I agree, I'll go with a four for this student. But what happened is we ended up with two hundred, what was it, two hundred and forty-four students. When we only have a hundred and thirty seats, so we have to have the rating system, we've got to have. A differentiation of who is the highest. And and those hundred and thirty seats need to go to those two students who had the highest first. If there was a hundred and thirty students who had all four, four fours. Okay, then they should get that. But you explained to us that there were students in the past. Who had a four, 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 and they, they only maybe took up a hundred and twenty seats and there were ten seats left. I don't have any problem with putting the rest of those students who didn't quite make it. There were no four, four fours left, there was only four, four threes left, I I don't have a problem with doing a lottery. Whatever, with those students who were left, to fill those last ten seats. That's the problem that I see that was created this time. And, and I just feel that we need to go back to the four, four, four. And the, and the four, four threes or whatever, so that you could use that as a comparison. Because that consensus part of it created a problem. Maybe they didn't mean to, I thi- I think the effort was there, you know, the, it was, it was a good intent. But I just think it created more students who were eligible, who we said were eligible, cause they only had a four. But it took some convincing to come up with the consensus. And I don't think that cons- that, that convincing is the same as students who. Who can be compared to the four, four fours to the four, four threes. Do, do, are you, are you following me? I know you all are following me, because you, you're so used to this, but obviously, we're gonna have more students. Maybe Virginia Beach is just an area that creates, you know, higher level students, I'm not sure, but. I do think that this process this year did create a lot more students eligible. What we said were eligible, because they only got a four, but they got that four. Some of them got it. Because there was a consensus after discussion with the raiders. That, you know, allowed some students to be considered a four, when maybe they, maybe they had a four, four, three. And we should have just given the seats to the four, four fours first. I, I, that's just my opinion on it, and I don't know if we can go back and fix it, I'm not sure, but. I'd like to see us do something to, to um go back and look at who got these seats and who didn't. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the golden solution. But I think we need to take a, a stronger look at this change and why we ended up with so many more this year than we have in the past. So, anyway, that's my opinion.
Ms. Brown.
Okay. Um, and so I, I wanted to say first off that I appreciate some of the um. Historical knowledge of the conversation regarding standalone um versus individual classrooms for gifted students. Um, that was actually very useful information to me. Um, at first, I actually just wanna comment, um, I've gotten a lot of emails. And I, I may not say a lot right now, but I just want to assure everybody that I'm hearing everything you're saying. And that I'm evaluating it, taking it in, and that everybody's concerns are important to me. I see a lot of heads nodding and shaking, and I'm evaluating. You know, what your thoughts are, based on the comments that I'm seeing, um. I, I, I do see a lot of parents' heads shaking regarding feeling like their questions have been adequately answered. So I, I do believe there's some work to be done there. Um, I see two things that we need to look at right now, and one is the short-term situation. Um, and how we got here, and um I can see where the wording of. No, not recommended is a problem in one through five. But I don't think that the numbers in one through five are a problem, and in fact, I. Maybe um it's worthy of evaluating if we can not use whole numbers every time, and maybe even use decimals. Um, and then maybe we wouldn't be in this um boat right now. Now, feasibility is another conversation for that. Um, but I, I do see what you're saying about the no recommendation, and you know. We could have just as easily not taken one away and changed it from no recommendation to something else. Um, so, you know, I think there, there is that. Um, I also agree with a couple of my colleagues. I do not believe that having a conversation to come to some sort of consensus for one, number four. Is a very good idea. Um, I, I also understand the desire to not have it be subjective. But if these are blind evaluations, I just don't really see how that's going to be. A, a real issue that I can say needs to be solved. Um, you know, certain people are going to look at certain qualities of certain students, and they're going to see something different, and that's okay. Um, that's exactly what makes our community so great, and it makes it so that we can really get a good idea of it. But I do think if it was five, 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 or four, four, four. Maybe there would be a couple less applicants. Um, not a hundred percent sure if that would be the case, or not, based on the data that you presented tonight. Um, but I do think that there is going to be a difference between some students. And there are going to be something that's going to make some students stand out a little more, so. Um, anyway, I just, I wanted to reassure the community. I see your heads nodding, I see your heads shaking, and you know, I'm paying attention, and this is important. Um, I, I do think if we have this many gifted students, that we also need to um find a way to. Continue forward long-term as well, so, thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
Uh, first a quick question, uh, kind of follow-up to, to the gifted cluster. So are students who are identified as gifted, are they in a class, classroom full of other gifted students, or are they in a normal classroom?
I'm not sure. They're not full, they're, they're clustered together. So for example, a classroom of twenty-five could have uh eight identified gifted students in it.
And there might be eight in another classroom. They're not all the same classroom.
Right.
Uh, okay, can you go, can you pull up uh slide twenty-four for me?
Twenty-four.
This is an interesting slide. I'll, I'll use the, the twenty-twenty-three column here to talk about it a little bit. So, how many first graders are there? Fewer than five thousand, right?
Around.
Right around five thousand.
Forty-nine hundred-ish, yeah. Well, that was my question. So you screened everybody, or you screened almost everybody?
We screened everyone who didn't opt out.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be clear.
Alright, so let's pick up our baseball analogy. So you got forty-nine hundred kids playing college baseball. And of those, seventeen hundred of them get drafted, and they're in the pros. They're playing minor ball, right? Is that right? So seventeen hundred of them have been identified as gifted?
Those are students who apply for gift.
How many of those are, are identified as gifted?
Though, uh, one hun- one thousand forty-seven, I think it was, were actually identified as gifted.
Okay, so about a thousand, okay, so a thousand of them have been drafted, and they're playing minor league ball. And a hundred and thirty of them are gonna go pro. That's it. That's all you got room for. A hundred and thirty of them are gonna go pro, right? That, that, that's what you're trying to say here, Meg, alright, yeah? So it seems to me you've done two things that diminished your, not yours, sorry, I won't say it that way. Two things have happened that diminished our ability to figure out. Who needs to play pro ball. One of them is you gone from a five to a four scale. And the other one is, you've, we've, we've eliminated the ability. Uh, to be more nuanced in the grading, right, in our, in our weighting. And I'm, I'm kinda, I'm, I'm kinda with Ms. Brown on the, on the five scale piece. I mean, call one something else if you like, but. But I actually don't think that not recommended is inconsistent with what the instruction says. You know, so there's, it says right here, there, the selection committee uses the following three questions as consideration when, when examining O D S applications. The first two are, is there evidence throughout the application that this student needs more than what is provided through the restore, resource cluster program at his or home, his or her homeschool? And it seems very reasonable to come to an answer of, no, not recommended. He gets what he needs in the, in the cluster program. Is there evidence that shows the student has the potential to be successful in the O D S setting? And if there's not, then again, not recommended is not an unreasonable thing to conclude. But in, in any case, I actually don't care what you call one. I mean, the point is, is that if you have a five scale, ballpark twenty percent of your applicants are gonna be in each one of those slots. Now, I, I understand that, you know, two, three, four, and five have the exact same verbiage, more or less, as one, two, three, four, in the new, in the new system. But people are people, and they're gonna kinda go, well, I've got four choices. I'm gonna mentally bend this, you know, my top twenty-five, etc. So nonetheless, you delu- that has had the effect of, I think, diluting the grading scale. So again, it doesn't matter what you call one, but I think a five scale makes more sense, it's more nuanced. But, but obviously, I think the other thing that's, that's identified, well, sorry, the numbers are right, are spot on here too. Uh, Ms. Williams pointed out that about three percent. So a hundred and thirty is but, is less than three percent, it's about two point seven percent of forty-nine hundred. So that's what you're after here. It, it looks, it looks to me like, you know, O D S is designed. To identify the top three percent uh of, of students uh for a gifted program. And I think the other, then the other thing, I think that this lays bare is that we have a, a lot more students who need. Gifted services of a high quality than we're, than we're currently delivering, and, and that's why parents are kind of, are upset, cause they recognize that. So, so I think, uh, you know, your, your last, your last slide on here, I think, exactly identifies what we need to do. Uh, in terms of figuring out what our way forward is to fix those problems. Appreciate your brief.
Ms. Owens.
Okay, um. With the G R Ts that are assigned to the, the schools, how are those distributed? Are they one per school, one per certain amount of gifted students, one per, how many students are in that school? How does that work?
So there are standards of quality for G R Ts, and Virginia, actually, we exceed it, because it's one per five hundred um gifted students. But we actually do put a gifted resource teacher at least one in every building. And based, and um Ms. Franklin can share a little more about this, because she's on the committee that has strongly advocated. And you guys have helped support with temporary employment agreement um contracts. So we've been able to increase the number of. G R Ts that we've had in order to provide additional G R Ts in some buildings, based on the numbers of gifted students and the services that they need. So if you'd like to share any, I know you've been, you were in that conversation longer than I was.
Well, and I would not be surprised if that was something that was brought in the next um discussion about the gifted program. Um, from, you know, from the committee. Um, so, yeah, don't, I would not be shocked to. Get a request for additional G R Ts as well, so.
Okay, yeah, and I plug for G R Ts. I have observed the G R T lesson this school year. Uh, Marie Culver, she's awesome, shout out to her, uh, but. I wanted to also kind of understand the, the question, I guess, that uh has been mentioned a couple times. The needs more than what's recommended in their school setting, in their uh primary school. Does that question imply that for the whole, up to that point, they have not been having their needs met in school? Is, is that what we're saying when we say they need more, that they're not getting it first grade was eight, they, they weren't getting what they need?
So I, I just think um we have to be really careful about the needs, right? Because um number one, when you read the full plan, right? It specifically explains in the plan that when a student's identified gifted, as we put in the presentation, that they automatically, the placement is in a. Gifted resource cluster classroom. And then parents have the opportunity to not opt out for consideration to O D S. I say that to say that there are students who are considered those top-tier students. Who do remain in their gifted resource cluster classrooms in their neighborhood school. So I am not okay with saying that we can't meet their needs, or we don't, because we have several top students. Who stay and remain in their buildings and do um sh- show success, because the teachers match their needs. To their instruction regardless. So I wanna be really careful with that. Those are thought-provoking questions. But at the end of the day, I wanna be clear that the selection committee uses the rating scale and ranks each application. So when they're sitting there as the team, they're looking across that application or the portfolio to see. Is this student consistently demonstrating, right, across all of these, uh, very strong, um, a, a very strong candidate? Then those students are identified with a four. If it's not consistent, then it, it goes down to the three. And I, I just wanted to make that clarification, so they're not sitting down writing yes, yes, yes to three questions, they're writing four, three, two, one.
Okay, um, and I, I agree. I just think that we do have to be really careful and clear about what that needs more than. Because I believe we are differentiating and, and trying to meet students where they are, and that, that should be our goal, meeting them where they are, wherever.
And I also wanna point out, that language is consistent with the plan that was at least two plans ago. So it was fifteen, language fifteen years ago. The services that we provide our students in the gifted clu- cluster program. Looks significantly different than they did fifteen years ago. So the plan is not. One hundred percent reflective of the practices that take place in schools now.
Okay, I'm gonna hold my uh other question till closed session, because I know we're getting late, and I wanna talk about option solutions. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
Okay, okay, so to Mr. Culpepper's point. My question would be, how do you ever give a student a one if they qualify? Right? If they've already qualified, how are they not recommended, is the first thing? Because if we say, could these, could this student's needs be met in, you know, at their comprehensive school? The answer would be yes to every student if we did not have an O D S. We would be meeting the needs of those students at their comprehensive school if this school did not exist. And so, we, it, it, it can go on and on. I would not want the job as a, as a raider, but I. Have to believe there has to be some level of trust and expertise that goes into the rating of our students. And none of us have ever seen an application, or have listened to raiders um. Discuss an application. And so, I don't know what they say, I don't know what they're looking at, and. So, a, a group, how many would one group have? How many groups do we have going on simultaneously ra- rating students?
So that, that, that would depend. Um, typically, we have anywhere between twenty-five to thirty, so that could be about uh ten groups, right? And there's a, typically a facilitator, and then there's at least three raiders. And the three raiders review the application, and when I say the review the application, all those things that you have listed on there. That's what they're looking for, to see that consistent across all areas. So they look at that performance task. Um, they receive um some professional learning to review, and they get the rating scale. So they have everything that's written in our plan done, and then they, they look, they say, okay, this kid's consistent across it, well, so we're gonna give this kid a four. But that's basically the conversation that happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would imagine this time, when all of the ratings came back, and you saw so many four, four fours. Yeah, okay. I don't know that there's ever going to be a, a perfect solution, so with that, I will, I will stop.
Okay, so I know um our parents are sitting here. We are going to be going into a closed session. No, decisions are being made right now. We need to go into closed session and meet with our attorney. On legal situations, legal questions, all of that. So we thank you um for staying and listening. To what everyone had to say, and I will um encourage you. If you have questions that you feel like can be answered by Dr. Kelly, uh, Dr. Rogers. And the gifted team, please call them, um, and they will answer the best they can.
That may be limited by what advice legal counsel.
Right, and, and like I said, we have to discuss that, okay? Email, that's what I'm saying, email. What is her presentation? Is that in closed session? Okay, all right. So, we're going to go, I'm just going to let everyone know, we're going to take this forecast of the school board agenda topics. There really isn't anything that's going to be happening before the retreat. So, we'll talk about it at the retreat, okay? You got it, everybody? Okay. Yeah, the forecast, you have it. So, just hold on to it, we'll review it at the retreat, okay? So, you need to read into closed.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraphes 1, 2, 3, 7, and 8, as amended, to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body; and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. Three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public use or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted, namely, to discuss, A, contracts and personnel matters related to the superintendent's search process; B, discussion related to the acquisition or disposition of real property; C, discussions with legal counsel regarding probable or pending litigation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Weems, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Vice Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion to go into closed did pass.
All right, we are in closed session, thank you.
Pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered.
Do you have a second?
No.
Some move?
Can you understand the naming of the second?
I live half a mile from here.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand.
I can't wait till we have the Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion to certify closed, pass.